Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town upon a Select Board meeting, March 25th at 7:00 P. M. We need to approve the agenda, approve the minutes of 1821. Board liaison report, park and recreation, receipt of external CPA audit FY 2020, excess weight, bid process, contract terms, Main Street Bridge repair bids, setup tax sale, Sheriff's Department, street sweeper, animal control, dog catcher position, public comment, adjournment. We need to add warrants, and I'm gonna make that 2A with that. Is there any other change?
2B.
Or 2B, I'm so sorry.
And liquor.
And liquor license, so we'll make renewed, yes. With that, can I entertain a motion, please?
We need to add, I need to add the response to this public records request, FOIA and VEMR.
So do you want to do that before the?
We can do it last, I'm finally the last.
Okay. Before public comment?
Sure, yeah, that's fine, right before is totally fine with me.
Make that 10A. Okay, with all those changes, is everybody satisfied? Can I entertain a motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Bob, oh, sorry, Bob, I skipped you. Bob?
Aye.
Thank you. Angie, aye. All right, two, approval of minutes, March 18th, 2021. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. All right, we're gonna add warrants. This is accounts payable from 3/26. When did it was for two weeks? Okay, for $56,770.95. And that, we have health insurance MVP for $7,982.32. We have VEMRs for $4,205.29. We have electric for $2,598.32. We have the IRS for $2,785.32. Can I entertain a motion, please?
With motion, let's up the warrants.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Um, check for number. This was for payroll, ending 3/26/21 for $8,952.97.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. This is a check for postage for $110 for Julie. Can I entertain a motion?
That's for, um.
Listers, I'm sorry, excuse me, listers.
Yeah, I'm, I'll second it.
For stamps, yes.
Right, yeah, I just want to make sure we know what it's for.
Sorry, okay, Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, and then we have three renewals for liquor license. Winchester's. Stewart's. Dollar General.
Second it.
Second, any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. All right. Board liaison report, parks and recreations.
Um, okay, this is gonna be very quick. Um, we need to take down our ice skating rink. Uh, I believe that we have some Parks and Rec folks that are planning to do that this weekend. We would love it if anyone wants to come and help us. It shouldn't take long if we have a lot of hands helping. Um, and Joel has given us permission to store the materials at, um, the warehouse for, for the highway department. So that way, we can reuse them again next season. Um, secondly, we received, we applied for and received a grant from Stewart's. And Angie had nothing to do with it. There was no favoritism, it was to corporate office, uh, for $1,500. And, um, it, it's not a grant in the sense that you have to use the money in, in some particular exact way. It's a donation to the town. And so I did ask for it for use for outdoor gathering space or pavilion. And since we didn't get the Better Places Grant, the Parks and Rec Committee talked about using that 1,500 to get two temporary carports that are 10 by 20 to create a temporary outdoor, um, space. Um, I spoke with Mike as zoning administrator, um, I, it's because it's temporary, there's no permit required. And we just, we could put our picnic tables under, under there, give us some, a couple of seasons, maybe it lasts two, three years. And we can move it around, we can start seeing what it looks like down there to have some shelter. And we were also thinking, we would like to use the, the remainder of that 1,500 to pay for the rest of the season to keep the porta potty there at the, so that way, it's, because we're building the skateboard and scooter ramps this spring. So hopefully, we're gonna get a lot of activity down there. When families go, it's really great to have a restroom. So if you guys approve of the uses of that money, um, I'd like to, um, have your approval to purchase those, those carports and the, um, and to pay for the restroom. And it's all out of donating money, this is not out of the town budget at all.
Make a motion to approve that, use of that $1,500 towards the outdoor, um, tents and the porta potty.
I second. Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, secondly, as I've sent to all of you, we received our external fiscal year 2020 audit. Um, so that has been received. Um, I just want to make sure you're acknowledging receipt of that. Um, and I did, with your permission, post the last page that shows no findings. Um, and I do have people asking to see the full reports. So I would like to be able to put those on a link to them on the website and on the Facebook page, so people can look at our audit.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Great, and that's all my stuff.
Okay. Thank you, second.
Yep.
Excess weight permit?
Yeah, so we have all of those, Joel sat down inside, all of them, so they just need your approval?
You want to read them? You want to read who they are?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay. Yep, I got it. Uh, excess weight permits from April 1st to March 31st, 2022. Cardinal Delivery Service, Maxon Trucking, Riggs Distiller, Gurney Brothers, Basin Brothers, A.R. Sandry, Phoenix Feeds and Nutrition, Newport Sand and Gravel, Renaud Brothers, Valley Crane, New England Quality Services, R.K. Miles, West Oil, Vermont Transco, Rabidow, Barrett Trucking, AmeriGas, uh, and Camp Precast Concrete.
So moved. Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
We don't have to sign these, because Joel already signed them.
Yeah, he already signed them.
So we just have to approve.
Move them, exactly.
Perfect, done.
Okay. Bid process and contract terms?
That's for the bridge bid, is that correct?
Uh, no.
No, oh, oh, no, sorry. Yep, sorry, Tim.
Yep, no problem. So that was for the invitation to bid for the mowing of the town.
Oh, okay.
And I sent the, what I put together to all of you. And while doing that, I just wanted to inquire if there is some set bid process that we should be following? Or anyone that knows how it's been done in the past that we should follow before I move forward? Um, the other part with that is in relation to contract terms, as far as doing one, two, or three-year terms on some of these. Some of them seem like, like this is a particular, it's a two-year. Maybe we should do it three years, so we don't have to do it all the time. And other, other trades, like we have to go to bid soon for the, the legal firm for the audit, the accounting firm. We don't need to do that possibly every two years, maybe we should be doing that a little longer, three years?
Yeah, I think, right, Ellen, that's, that's usually a three-year.
The audit then usually goes out for three years.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, years ago, we decided to, uh, we would at least give them out the years, at least two.
At least two?
Because if they've had to buy a piece of machinery, they know how to pay for it.
I think, in, in my opinion, um, I think staying, if we went to a three-year, um, bid process on everything with the clause in there, obviously, if they're not doing their job, then, then we can get rid of them, you know, if we need to. But I think for consistency purposes, you know, the audit, external audit is a three-year. If we went to lawn mowing, three-year, if we try to stay consistent with every bid process we put out for a three-year process.
Okay.
Um, I just think it makes sense, in my opinion.
Yeah, I do, I agree with that.
Yeah, there's specialty things you have to have that wouldn't be, but, you know, for, for general things like that, I think.
Regular contracts, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
You just have a set date for opening, and then a couple of us, you would, you know, at least three people usually are there to witness the opening of the bids.
Okay.
And then we announce them at the next meeting usually.
Do, do we need a motion on that, or do, should we form a policy?
I wish it set the policy.
Right, I think we should draft a policy for that. I think we should draft a policy for, um, those types of bids, and then we have that, you know, to fall back on, no matter what.
The only thing about it is, you say three years, which is fine, but if, uh, they're not performing, you want to make it, and that, we can get out the contract.
Exactly.
After a couple of years.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Did you guys see the bid that he wrote for the lawn mowing yet? Because we did, well, yeah, because he put severability in there.
Right, yeah, yep, yep.
So that is, you don't need stuff for three years.
That's right, if they're not mowing, one, they'll get rid of them.
That's right.
Before it comes brushy instead of grass.
I have in there that Select Board of the Town upon all reserves the right to accept or reject any or all bids. And if awarded to vendor, Select Board reserves the right to terminate the contract due to unsatisfactory performance.
Yep, that's perfect.
Yeah, I read the, I read the, uh, I read the, uh, the, the bids, the, the RFPs, uh, really nicely done, thanks, Tim.
Okay, great, so we don't need a motion, we're all set on that, just need to set a policy.
Well, I think we need to draft a policy, and that's something that you can work on, um, perfect.
Thank you, Tim.
Oh, a couple of things on the, when you do draft the policy, make sure that it specifies that the board gets to review all bids. Uh, there, there should be no filter between those things coming in and getting to the board. Now, they can come with this to meet the requirements, but we still get to see it. And we should, it, it should be a push, not a pull, we shouldn't have to ask to see it.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Main Street Bridge repair bids.
Do any of you guys have a copy of that with you? I didn't bring my copies with me, I forgot them, oh, Tim, perfect.
Tim has one.
I, I know what we need to do here, and, um, a copy of Joel, right, I just, I left these right on my desk at home. Lasses.
Those are mine. You can wear them everywhere.
No, that's good. Um, so we received three bids for patching the Main Street Bridge. Um, one from East Engineering. That's, that's our, um, recommendation to award. The, the bids came from, bids came from Alpine Construction, Daniel's Construction, and Parent Construction. Alpine Construction was $79,878. Daniel's Construction was $97,895. And Parent Construction was $116,835. Um, I was here for the bid opening with Joel. Um, the only person that was present was from Alpine, of, of the contractors. The only person, the only contractor that was present was Alpine Construction. Um, there's, there's some discrepancy between the bids, so I'm gonna read what the bidders did so that we all know what's going on. And then I'll explain, I'll explain, um, because Joel's recommendation is to go with Alpine. Um, and he is, they are an approved contractor in the state of Vermont, we vetted them. So, uh, general conditions and mobility, uh, which is mobilizing their equipment. Alpine Construction was $16,798. Um, hang on, I gotta get this out here in front of me. Parent Construction was $59,535 mobilized. And Daniel's, let me see if I find it. Sorry. Bear with me for a couple of minutes, I just gotta find Daniel's. Why am I not finding Daniel's voices? Anyways, um, I can't find Daniel's right now. Well, the concrete repair for, and these are the two that are the farthest apart anyway. Um, the lowest and the highest, concrete repair, um, $51,480 for Alpine, $49,400 for, uh, Parent. The concrete repair of overhead and vertical concrete was $11,600 for Alpine, and $7,900 for Parent. Um, I believe Daniel's, if I remember correctly, their numbers were fairly similar to Parent. Uh, I think that their mobilization was a little bit less, but the difference in, in the mobilization between all of them is Alpine is closer. They're, they're, they're out of Skylerville, New York, these other guys are, um, way up north in Vermont. Um, one of the other big discrepancies was the vertical. And Alpine, if they don't need to spend as much of that 11/6 on the vertical, they're gonna do more in deck repair. Um, and that's the vertical, overhead and vertical is a crap shoot, you don't know until you get in there, is, is how it was explained to us. So Joel's recommendation on the bridge is, um, in, in also, uh, food state, is to go with Alpine Construction for the sum of $79,898.
Are you all set?
Yep, that's all I have.
All of them are certified, state of them.
They're all certified, right, yep, so this is Joel's, this is Joel's thing. Um, right, East Engineering vetted them and made the recommendation, we go with Alpine. Um, and as we know, the deck is in need of fixing.
Right.
So that's, that's Joel's recommendation, and like I said, I was here for the, I came in for the bid openings, Joel asked me to come in, and I did.
Okay. Can I make a motion that we go with Alpine?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you. Number seven.
Well, so the next, the next thing, sorry, this, this would have been in there too. This is the broom to be shared by.
Oh, that was on the down under share.
That's right, that's right. Um, might as well do it right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, we received two bids for the broom, tractor-mounted broom, to be shared by the transfer station and the road crew. Um, United Ag and Turf was $7,100, uh, for the broom, and $1,400 for the water system, for a total of $8,500. Um, Salem Farm Supply, uh, same broom, complete with the water system, included in their price is $7,000. So it's $1,500 less for Salem Farm Supply than United Ag and Turf. And the highway and transfer station are going to split the cost with $3,500 apiece. Uh, we all saw the email, I'm sure, from Tom Shuey, that Tom's in total agreement with that. Uh, at this time, Joel's recommending to go with Salem Farm Supply for a total of $7,000.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we go with Salem Farm Supply for the broom quote for 7,000, as recommended.
Any other discussion? Yeah. Yep, on the shared tractor, in case anybody didn't hear, Jamie. Okay, Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Yep, that's it, I just wanted to do that while we were doing it.
All right.
Just get it out of the way.
Okay, so moving on to set up sales tax.
Tax sale.
They're taxing, oh my God, I'm sorry, I had where that gets over to where Ellen is just gonna be here. I'm still old, numb, people, I'm sorry.
So I am working on putting together a list to start the tax sale proceedings once again. Um, I did not do a fall tax sale or a spring one, I think, last year, due to COVID. Um, summer's almost here, if we start the process soon, um, it would be into May or June before we actually held a tax sale. If we needed to hold one, if the office is still close to the public at that time, we can go outside. It's still on the same grounds, it's still the town office building grounds. So my question is, a couple, I have Mr. O'Toole, Attorney O'Toole always does our tax sales. He starts out with the 30-day notice letter that is paid from our legal fund. The last time we did them, they were 30, $30 a, a letter, we pick up that cost. About three-quarters or more of people respond to those letters when they receive them and pay their taxes, or set up a fair payment plan, so they do not go to tax sale. Then there's a couple people that may no longer live in their home or something, that don't respond. And those are the ones that most of the time go to tax sale. Um, my, my hope is that everybody responds, sets up payments, um, from the 30-day letters, it works. Um, usually, I send out 35 to 40, the list has shrunk. I have a lot of people on payments already. Um, so there's in the vicinity fluctuating, um, there may be a few I pulled, because there's a lot of mobile homes right now. Mobile homes are tough at tax sales. Um, a lot of them are lower tax money, and Kevin O'Toole doesn't do anything a certain amount. He won't tax sale them because there's no return. Um, I'm not sure what we're gonna do with that process yet when that happens. But, um, I do have some properties, I actually just pulled a couple today, because people have contacted me to either pay a lump sum or pay it in full. Um, so my question to you is, are you okay, for one, for me to start the tax sale? Usually, I don't have an issue, I'm just coming to the board, because I haven't done them in so long. Um, and to let you know that if we do start it, the 30-day letter gives the people the option to set up payments, et cetera. I send bills every month, if people don't, if delinquent taxpayers are not receiving a bill on a monthly basis and haven't received one in a long time, and you've changed your address, they should check in and give me a new address, because that means they're being returned to me. Um, so.
Do, do you have any that are being returned to you now on your, on a monthly basis?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so you do.
Yes, I do. I have a couple that are being returned to me, but I still receive phone calls, because they say they don't own it anymore, but it's still in their name. I have some that I just can't find. I actually Googled and found a couple addresses and sent them, and, and got the tax money businesses. Um, so yes, I do have some that are being returned. Um, sometimes it's a single owner, and we don't know, maybe the single owner has deceased. If somebody sees somebody on the list in the town report that they know is deceased, maybe they let the town know, because that could be a reason why it's being returned, if they didn't, if they. Right, right, I don't research into the town records to see who has mortgages at this point, the attorney does all that. Um, I don't contact mortgage companies, et cetera, that's what happens during the process of tax sale. Um, so I'm just looking for an approval to send approximately 20 or 25 letters. Um, if, my plan was to do it by April 1st to get things rolling, but I didn't get on the agenda until this evening. So, and I have to contact Kevin to see when he's able to do them. So sometime in the next probably 30 days or so, Kevin would put those letters together with the numbers from Nemrick and the delinquent tax bills, and we would start the process.
Okay, anything else?
Does anybody need to know how the people are picked, why they go to tax sale?
It's your job.
Well, besides that?
No.
I just, I don't just pick them, I just don't pick names out of the hat.
Maybe.
They go, anybody that owes 2019 and back. So they may have paid their 2020, but they have ignored their 2019 and have not contacted me. They are delinquent two years, because they owe 2019, you don't have to owe two years. You have, 2019 and back puts you in danger of tax sale through your current ta, or through the delinquent taxes in the delinquent sewer also. It falls under the same category, so you can be sold for only owing delinquent sewer. You still can be taxed, sailed for that. Do I like the process? Do I like to do it? No. People, all they have to do is call me, my number's on the bill. Okay?
Okay.
I think you're very accommodating, your job, so.
Yep.
And I apologize, because I missed the vote.
Go ahead.
I apologize, because I saw your email, and I forgot to mention it to Tim until after our last meeting, to add you to the agenda.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's why I ran this one, otherwise you would have been on the free.
And that's no problem, because we haven't done one in a year, a month doesn't make a difference?
Make a motion that we let the Duncan tax collector start sending out them letters.
I'll second that.
I agree, any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. All right, moving on to Sheriff's Department. What was that on here for?
I put this, I put the Sheriff's Department on, um, asked for that to be on. Uh, I thought Joel was gonna be here tonight, probably a little miscommunication, but I'll address it. Um, we had a, um, letter that was sent to the Sheriff's Department, an email, and wanting to know about weekends and the contract that we signed, and how many hours, if I remember correctly, and I don't have the email in front of me. Um, but when we signed that contract, we gave a specific number of hours per week. Nowhere in that contract, to the best of my knowledge, does it specify when those hours are to be used. Okay, so that's totally up to the Sheriff's Department's discretion. Now, that being said, I don't have a clue what their dispatch is like, that's not our job to know that. Um.
The reason why we don't know that is because they make it very clear that they don't want set times, so people know where they are at what time.
Right, now, I do know that our, the sheriffs, and, and there's two of them that have been working more in panel than the others. Um, both of those local sheriffs who, who live here, uh, have been doing some night patrols. They've been doing some routine nightly patrols, different hours, um.
And weekends.
And, and weekends, that's right, Bob, that's right. Um, I, I know that they've done, I know they've done some, some of those hours. Um, now, you know, we're only, I, I don't remember, but I know it's like 35 hours, is that, is that something like that? You know, 35 hours in a week is not very much, and I wish we could do way more, but unfortunately, we just can't right now. So, we're just a budget item. So that, in a nutshell, I hope answers that, um, email.
We can, we can probably ask Joel at some point, uh, and probably a good idea to do it soon, is to, i- i- what about? We can we can probably ask Joel at some point. Uh and probably a good idea to do it soon is to what about the dispatch, right? Because there's two aspects to it. I know he patrols and uh and they do uh they they mix it up. So that just like Angie said, so that nobody knows where they are. They're not predictable. But they do do nights and weekends on the patrols. Uh but I think that email also asked about how do I report an issue if it's off hours? And they're not and and no one's answering. And I'm not a hundred percent sure what that answer is. I think we need to reach out and find out.
Vermont State Police dispatches for the Sheriff's Department. Joel's told us that before.
Oh, okay. Well, that's perfect then. So so uh so weekends off hours, it's not it's not call the sheriff. It's call the state police. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All of the state police are here all the time anyways. We should be calling the state police if you have a problem, if you can't get ahold of the Sheriff's Department. The state police, we pay for them. We should use them. Doesn't matter what time of day it is. They're there for us as long as as well as the Sheriff's Department. It's nice to use the Sheriff's Department, but they're not always on call. Feel free to call the state police. I have done it numerous times and things have happened at Stewart's. And it's five o'clock in the morning. I call the state police and they respond. They come.
I I think back to your point though, Bob, I do agree with you. I think I think maybe at this point. Maybe we do get a concrete answer. Um because of the email from Joel. Um the states, yes, the state police do dispatch rather than a hearsay or Joel told us or whatever. But I think if we enter it into the minutes, you know, um from the Sheriff's Department that that is. You know, that's who dispatches for them on off hours when they don't have a dispatcher. I I just think it makes makes sense to have that in our in our minutes.
Okay, I I agree. Uh thanks, Mike.
Okay, any further discussion? Alright, moving on to animal control dog catcher position. Mike?
Um I had a. I had a person resident reach out to me. Actually, I reached out to him first because I had heard that he had some interest in becoming the animal control officer. Reached out to him. Within minutes, he called me back. He absolutely does. Uh it's Leonard Cody. Um the problem being we need to find a place for the kennels for a temporary. Um if he has to temporarily restrain the dog. My understanding is they used to be at the transfer station at one time.
Yep, they did.
Um he's very interested in doing the job. I think he would do a really good job of it. Um I think he would answer the complaints. Um in a timely fashion and take care of problems. So I think it's our job to find a place for those kennels. And and get that taken care of. If we if we decide if we decide to appoint him as the animal control officer and I my recommendation would be to. Appoint him as that person.
Ellen, do you have something?
I I just want you to be sure that you look into that transfer station issue because I'm trying to remember because I was here. But I think there was an issue with leaving the dogs over at the transfer station in the kennels because they're unattended. You're not in the area. Unsupervised. There's not. They're outside. Unsupervised. It's not. The whole area isn't locked in. I think there was an issue.
We have we have kennels. The way I understand it, we have fencing.
I know. We had fencing then and there was an issue setting them up. Um have you spoke to Tom?
No, I have not.
Because Tom, I'm pretty sure you should double check that because I know it was mentioned. I don't know if it ever really happened.
Okay.
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 Because I know it was an issue at that time.
Well, at any rate, at any rate, we we need to at any rate, we need to figure that out. Because we need an animal control officer. In in my opinion, and it becomes our responsibility to figure out. What we're gonna do with the dogs when our animal control officer or or cats or whatever. Uh whatever it is, I'm just saying, animal control, right? Uh it's we need someone and and you know. We we need to figure out what to do with the animals after they're seized or whatever you want to call it.
If you if you appoint him as well, he could probably help you figure that out, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, no, he he just doesn't have a facility to to place the the dogs if they're confiscated or whatever. He he doesn't have a facility to take care of.
Yep.
So that's something we need to look into.
Okay.
Can I say one more thing in regards to that? The other thing that I think that you need as the board needs for the animal control is a policy for the animal control officer to actually follow. Do we have one of those? Because I don't remember reading one. Um only because because then it makes so that they know how long how long are they supposed to hold the dog? Twenty-four hours, thirty-six hours? You you know what I mean? There's there's they need a policy to follow.
There you go. If we don't have a policy, then let's create a policy.
Because then you're not because you're paying them to board the animal somewhere.
Right, somebody's gotta be responsible.
Right.
That's right.
Right, to take care of them. What what happens to the animal if nobody claims it? How do you get money for that, et cetera? Because we should be make if we're boarding the animals and you're gonna board them at the transfer station, then the town should be. Getting boarding fees.
No, absolutely. No, absolutely. And I think that's that's a great point, Ellen. We should we should um see if we do have a policy. If not, let's create one. Don't think it'd take a whole lot of time to create a policy, you know, to get this going. I think we could probably. I think we could probably reach out to Shasberry or somebody else and.
Okay, in my opinion, I think the state has recommend has a policy already. You gotta keep the dog. You don't have to keep it very long. Maybe twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours. And after five days, you can you can euthanize it if you feel like it. Yeah, I mean, these are these are but what they do have a guideline.
Okay.
That our our dog officer can follow. We had that. Actually, but we we haven't actually had. Our our dog guy didn't want to follow it. And that made it worse. Because if you got, we don't have a huge dog problem.
No, we don't.
But but if this was handled right away, like it should be handled, and they know it was no nonsense, you know.
We wouldn't have any dog problems. Very little.
If somebody has a dog and they think anything of that dog, they're gonna be contacting somebody before forty-eight hours or even twenty-four hours. They'd be calling somebody.
And.
Hey, my dog is gone.
My my personal opinion is this gentleman here will take this job seriously and. Um any dog complaints or animal complaints that we get will be dealt with in a really timely fashion. And the way they should be dealt with, Ronnie. I don't, you know, I don't think he's gonna go in crazily, but I think he's gonna go in and and do his job. I really feel that way about him. Been here for a long time.
If you're making that motion, I'll second it.
I'll make a motion that we um appoint Leonard Cody as the uh animal control officer.
Second it.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Right.
Angie, I. Okay, so um. We need to work on a policy and we need to contact Tom over at the transfer station.
I I think I think one of the first things that we. Well, I think one of the first things we should do is to reach out to the state like Ronnie said and see if the state has a policy. Why recreate the wheel? If the state already has something in place, let's just use the state policy and go from there. That's my opinion.
That's fine.
So it's either stay and check the BLTC for a model policy also.
Right.
Okay.
If we run this correctly. We just like Benny can don't have no kennel. No. He's getting involved with someplace that keeps him. So tick and tick him right there. But we gotta do things correctly.
Right.
Right.
That's what hasn't been.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Done correctly. A person made it up. It might not take it. You call them in the afternoon till the next morning, but they'll take it. Right. That's what we want. We don't want to.
Right, we don't want to be in the dog boarding business.
That's right. And parking and the carrying out.
No, we want to be in the we want to be in the, you know, take care of a dog complaint like it should be taken care of and then put the dog in the appropriate place until the owner comes and takes care of it.
And you can be here and these people know. They contact. They know who to contact to replace these dogs.
That's right. That's right.
Right.
Most of them are 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 saved. They're put in these adoption places.
So I'll take I'll take care of notifying um Mr. Cody that he is now the uh.
He's watching, Tony.
Okay, whatever. He's notified. There you go. I I can.
Welcome, Leonard.
Welcome, Leonard. Fill out his paperwork and we need to find out, I believe, all the equipment was picked up from the previous. Don't know if that happened.
I don't know if it happened.
We need to find out if that happened and if it hasn't happened to make it happen.
Right.
Okay.
We'll have to talk with Joel.
Alright.
And go from there. Jamie, do you want to talk with Joel? Okay. Uh Jamie's gonna take care of that.
Alright, thank you, guys. Alright, that's it. So we're gonna move on to Mike. Public comment.
No, not public comment.
You want to say this before public?
Before public comment. That's right. And I'm gonna take my mask off just so I can read and not be muffled. I think this is a um. This is an extremely important. Statement. So the statement, all of this is gonna be entered into the minutes. Of this of tonight's meeting. So when I get to the timeline. Uh I'm gonna just read bullet points, but all of the emails and their contents will be available through um into our minutes. This statement is to address ongoing false allegations against our treasurer regarding municipal retirement, VEMR's. A former select person, Marlena Pellon, is making ongoing public accusations such as, quote. How has the select board addressed the illegal retirement monies applied to the treasurer's retirement fund? Unquote. In a public records request, she writes, quote, produced dollar amount of monies misappropriated to remu- retirement funding, unquote. In recent public records requests, the same former select person has been asking to see copies of our personnel policy. And former versions of our personnel policy. In searching out these policies, we discovered some concerning information that we feel we must speak about publicly. As our treasurer does not deserve to continue to have false allegations leveled against her. Now I'm gonna give you a timeline. And I was not on the board. With any of this, but it doesn't matter.
Oh, I was if there's any questions.
But that's right. And Jamie is on the board for this as well. Correct? Okay. June twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, Ms. Pellon sends an email to the board with draft policies to work on that evening at a special meeting. Personnel policy attached to this email has a section twenty-seven retirement which reads. Elected officials and employees who work a minimum of twenty-four hours per week and not less than one thousand forty hours per year. Are required by state regulations to participate in the state retirement plan. Elected officials will lose their town contribution eligibility when their terms expire or they lose an election. They work on this policy and others that evening. June twenty-seventh. Ms. Pellon sends an email to the entire board, the former uh town administrator. And former assistant with the subject line Policies for Approval. The content of the email reads Linda and Michael. Attached to the apologies or attached to the policies we'll be adopting tonight, please print a clean copy for signature. In that policy. Section twenty-seven reads exactly what was sent to work on days prior on June twenty-fourth. The other policies worked on were a conflict of interest policy, a sexual harassment policy, and a harassment policy. June twenty-seventh, around one hour thirty-seven minutes on the CAT TV video, board discusses signing these policies. Ms. Rowe asks Ms. Pellon, are those what you emailed this morning? Ms. Pellon states. Uh hold on. Ms. Pellon states, yep. The board then proceeded to sign the already approved policies. These policies were placed into the policy book. Why is it important to talk about this? Policy the board worked on and approved on June twenty-seventh had exactly the same language under retirement. Nothing was changed or added to that section from when it was worked on until it was signed. Not gonna read it again. I already read it once. September fourth, twenty nineteen. The former town administrator with Ms. Pellon on copy sends a copy of the personnel policy to the organizer. Of the Respect in Workplace Program. The copy he sent is the exact same document as was sent by Ms. Pellon on June twenty-seventh. And the language in Retirement Section twenty-seven remains unchanged. November twelfth, twenty nineteen. Ms. Pellon writes to VEMR's Jennifer, curious are fees paid to the delinquent tax collector and town clerk eligible for VEMR's retirement match? Please reply all as I included our auditors in order for better understanding when they are reconciling financials. The answer. I get this question quite often. The earnings from delinquent tax collection or other positions not qualified by themselves can be included as earnings from your town if the person holds another position that qualifies. The additional earnings can be included as a benefit to the employee as it increases the fiscal year earnings. Here's the thing. An employer does have the right to say they have two different positions for the town. And that they can be held by two different people. So the delinquent tax position doesn't qualify. Those earnings will not be included. This is not the norm. Most towns have someone who is already employed wearing this hat and include the earnings. We ask if the town includes the earnings. They always do for anyone who wears this hat as their second job for the town. This is not a choice for person to person or year to year, et cetera. It becomes their in-house policy. To include all earnings from the town or in-house policy not to include the extra job earnings. An example, town office administrator qualifies for VEMR's. They also hired or elected to be the delinquent tax collector. They wear two hats. The town reports all earnings, no matter what the duty for this person because they qualify because of their office position. If they quit their office position, they no longer qualify and nothing gets reported. The tax collector position doesn't qualify on its own. Or the town office admin qualifies for VEMR's. They also hired, elected to be the delinquent tax collector. They wear two hats for the town. The town only reports the earnings for the position for the position that qualifies, office admin earnings. Jen. On November thirteenth. Um Marlena replies. In our town's case, we have an electric treasurer who is stipend, receives a monthly payment. This individual is also elected as delinquent tax collector. Personnel policy does state each elected or appointed position is a separate and may not be combined. Note, this was this is note from up from me. This was not in the policy to date on November thirteenth when she wrote this email. The time cards submitted by the individual do not specify in or out times. We have requested this many times. It is continually ignored. So one, we cannot validate the hours per position meet the twenty-four hour threshold or if the individual is adding both position hours together. Even though the positions in the policy state separate positions and may not be combined. When the treasurer takes her stipend, she adds the fees collected as delinquent tax collector. In the same check. It appears the total is being added together for VEMR's match. This is a note again from me. This was not in the policy. November fourteenth with a timestamp of two thirteen AM. Marlena writes to the internal auditors, Joel Barrington, Darcy Pruden. And the board in regards to notes on the personnel policy offered by Darcy, not for discussion but information only. The attached policy that was sent to us earlier is not the personnel policy we the board signed and adopted in July. The attached policy is a completely different policy. I'll bring the personnel policy we adopted tomorrow. It is the same policy that appears in the policy book. We should be making alterations to that policy only otherwise we miss. Many of the other items we changed.
Hey, Mike, can I interrupt briefly?
Sure.
Uh just with the uh with the timestamps, understand that pulling out of the archives. Uh that is Greenwich Mean Time. So when you read the time that she sent it, it was actually nine something, I believe. You have to subtract five hours, but I just want people to know that's Greenwich Mean Time. So if that becomes the sticking point.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, Bob. I didn't realize that myself. So thank you very much for that. Uh I'll I will. This is back. Ms. Pellon is speaking, writing here. I will bring my laptop. We can make any adjustments to the actual policy tomorrow night. Print it and sign it into action. I have it saved on my thumb drive. If it cannot be found on Mr. Walker's laptop. Sincerely, Marlena. Another note. Policy Darcy was commenting is the exact policy that was approved in June and used officially by the town administrator in September. So at this point, there are no changes in policy or different policies being disseminated. November fourteenth, twenty nineteen, timestamp again, seven fifty-six. So. Does it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
Fifty-six.
Yeah, Joel, Joel responds to the email. At Marlena, that is the same exact policy, but for the changes, we would appreciate signing that in as is. In as is, so we all have a copy at the time of signing, so there is no discrepancies going forward. Marlena responds to Joel. "It's very long, just included the highlighted parts. Hi, Joel. Just to clarify, it's not the policy the board adopted. There were provisions the VEMR's had us add regarding elected appointed positions being separate positions and may not be combined and to add elected appointed positions, providing detailed time cards showing in and out punches to validate time work to meet minimum requirements for participating in the health benefits Vermont Retirement." Note, the day prior, VEMR's told Ms. Pellon specifically that is common practice, that it is common practice to combine positions. The only way to disallow combining is to have it specified in the policy. VEMR's never had the town add a clause about not combining positions. In addition, we were recommended to add that elected appointed individuals must sign an agreement to follow town adopted policies and procedures as a condition to participate in health insurance. "I have the electronic copies of all policies we adopted during our work sessions because there was concern that policies were not changed as we recommended or that they were altered after the board approved them. We caught this with changes made to rules and procedures in the personnel policy. I made sure I kept them in order to verify nothing was changed. It appears what was presented to the board yesterday on November thirteenth is not the same policy we approved June twenty-fourth. It's easy to print something else and place the signature page to it, hence the original copies I kept." Marlena. Um, so, no, I got more, Jamie. And then when you talk, you're gonna get the microphone because nobody can hear what's going on. Okay? Um, so, there's an insinuation that these provisions, which are probably not the approved personnel policy, was changed and manipulated after approval by town staff and officials. This is, this is me talking. According to the electronic record, these provisions never existed in any version, working or otherwise of the personnel policy. This is the first record of any assertion that there is a clause in the policy to disallow combining. Sorry. November fourteenth, twenty nineteen, Select Board meeting. Joel Burlington tells Ms. Pellon, "The policy we are working from is the same one you have." Marlena responds and tries to say that, "No, the policy that you have is not the one we passed in June because it is missing provisions, including the one that states do not combine positions for retirement." Says that this is not the policy she has on her thumb drive and that they worked on. However, according to our electronic archives, Joel did indeed have the correct policy. Joel asked, "Well, how was it changed in between?" Marlena responds, "We don't know that." She then proceeds to tell the board that the policy they approved in June is missing and insists that four provisions were left out. She summarized them. Bob asked, "Do these four provisions change anything at all for our staff in the way they do things now?" She said, "No, that they don't affect anything, insist they were in the original document from June and that they were just things required by statute." She said she would send them to Linda for addition to the policy book. The board believed her and approved the discussed changes regarding overtime, et cetera. And the missing provisions, accepting her at her word, that those provisions were in the original document. November eighteenth, uh, another email. Um, this is, looks like it's to the board. "Hi, everyone. Attached is the updated policy. Items in yellow are changes the board made back in June. These were the items that seemed to be missing from the pages in the book. Items in red are changes I made to meet staff requests. This was the first time these provisions appear anywhere in our records." December thirteenth, Marlena sends the personnel policy with the added provisions to the forensic auditor and to VEMR's, and again alleges the policy from June was fraudulently manipulated. At this point, this policy with the provisions become what both the forensic auditor and VEMR's think have always been Powell's policy. This is from Jennifer of VEMR's. "Per your request, attached are scanned copies of the last two personnel policies the board has approved. Section twenty-two, medical insurance, section twenty-seven, retirement, other sections where we added the language in June." I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is from Marlena to Jennifer. I apologize. "When I first spoke to you about combining positions to meet VEMR's requirements, we passed those original changes six twenty-five, twenty nineteen. It took me a while, but I knew I had scanned copies of the signed policies. I started doing this when we noticed after passing something that were not added to the policy binder." Uh, anyway, I found the last two. Oddly, someone took the seven twenty-eight policy edits were made to section seven regarding overtime and added the six twenty-five, twenty nineteen signature page to it. So the original signature is missing. When I compared my scanned copies to what is in the binder book at the town office, pages nine and eleven are from a drafted policy predating six twenty-five, before we added the language regarding medical and retirement. But after we changed the qualification date to participate in medical insurance in section twenty-two to March tenth, twenty eighteen, it almost appears as though certain pages were replaced to avoid the language that was recommended regarding elected positions, time cards, and combining rules. Uh, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, after having altered the policy to put our treasurer out of compliance with VEMR's retirement matching and sending that altered policy to the forensic auditor, she then sends that same allegation to our town attorney. It must be stressed that anyone who made a determination about retirement matching during these three months were working from a manipulated policy that had provisions added to it that were never part of the original document that was given to all officials and staff. February sixth, twenty twenty, the board meets and discusses the policy again and improves, and approves the version without the provisions. Ms. Pellon abstains from the vote. This is the policy we have in place to date. Well, just to be clear, this is not, this is more me and stuff that came up from, uh, public records requests that came out to us. And the entire board has not had any discussion on this as a board um, at all. This has been between, um, our board liaison, myself, um, and, uh, our treasurer and Bob Jarvis. The rest of the board has, you guys are probably getting blindsided a little bit.
Jamie has his hand up.
I, I,
Okay.
So, all right, so that's fine, Jamie, um, I, I got a little more to say. Let me, just let me finish this up. Yep, yep. So let me finish where I'm going. VEMR's was audited late twenty twenty and Powell was one of the randomly selected towns to have their VEMR's participation audited. We received a final report on twelve-nine, twenty twenty, stating we are in compliance with VEMR's retirement. VEMR's was contacted this year asking this question about combining of rules, and they stated that as far as VEMR's is concerned, we are in compliance with their requirements that the combination of rules for the purposes of collecting retirement is legal. The representative also indicated that changing the policy to deprive, to deprive someone of benefits when they are already participating is inappropriate. Even if the provisions added to the policy from November to February are considered valid, that would only put the treasurer out of compliance for three months. It is not ethical or legal to put participating employees, employees out of compliance through manipulates, manipulation and policy. And this has always been this board's intention, so I, if I'm wrong, guys, let me know, but I believe this to be a true statement. It is the board's intention to allow combining of positions, and I'd like to propose we write a statement as such to add to the policy and also to send to VEMR's, the forensic auditor, and our town council so that there are no further confusions or questions on this matter. We can come back to that. We hope that this is the last time we hear false allegations against anyone in this office. These false allegations not only destroy reputations, they create harm that impede staff and officials' ability to do their work. It also costs many hours and dollars in staff time, taxpayer monies, constantly field allegations like these. It is allegations like these that brought us into an unnecessary forensic audit, cost taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars. Taking these allegations to fraudulently manipulating policy needs to be condemned. We're speaking about this policy so that the public can understand this context that has created so much havoc, unnecessary expense, and damage to the reputation of our officials and staff. Additionally, we only discovered this because of frequent and time-consuming public records requests from Ms. Pellon. She's now requesting to come into the office on a regular basis to inspect original files during working hours. After speaking with our attorney, we are now aware that we have no requirement to accommodate requests such as this, especially in COVID when we have reduced capacity in the office. I'd like the board to discuss all public records requests being done via document reproduction by staff as opposed to giving our original files to non-officials without supervision, ensure that our original records are not altered or manipulated in any way. Public records requests require paid staff time to fulfill. When there are multiple and frequent requests, we are happy to fulfill these requests, but they are subject to fees per Vermont statute with no waivers. This prevents taxpayers from footing the bill for individual frequent requests. So, we need a couple of things, we need to act on a couple of things, but I think we need to discuss, have some discussion first.
Ellen.
First of all, I'd like to thank this board from my heart for finally bringing this to light for the public to know. It's been a long road. The attack on me started in two thousand nineteen when both of my parents were very ill, and I was unable to defend myself the way I could have because it would have nipped it in the bud before I went to a forensic audit. I knew that this, Marlena, the previous select board member was after me. It was obvious, and, and others that worked in the office, um, some internal auditors. I have all my records. If, if people would have come to me, we never would have went into a forensic audit because of VEMR's, because I had emails back and forth to Jen at VEMR's. Um, I appreciate everything the board has done. I want you to know that the personnel policy that supposedly was handed out to all staff and elected officials never happened. We never had anything to sign. We've never seen any of the policies in the book. We were never handed them to read. So we can't follow a policy if we are not given it. And thank you for allowing me to continue with my VEMR's as I have broke no laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
Um, yes. I agree with, uh, Mike's letter, especially the last statement. And when we changed it back, and I think it was stated December thirteenth, um, it was in February, but a town employee brought it to, I believe it was Elizabeth's attention, or possibly Brian's, but I know Elizabeth came down to the town office that day, contacted me and said that, you know, the policy, the book was missing and whatnot, and we were trying to take and locate it. We found, once it was found, solid discrepancy, that's when we acted upon it. Um, because everybody, not, not the whole board had agreed with those other amendments or additions, however you want to state it. Um, they were brought up when we were doing our works, um, studies, um, working on the policy and procedure, but there was quite a few things that we found were misinterpreted in that last thing, and that's why we had to change it back because it not only was unfair to, as far as a combined position, but it was also unfair to our employees as far as their overtime and a lot of other things, um, the way it was going to be calculated. And we didn't feel as a board at the time was, um, fair to our staff.
Yeah, so I, I do want to, uh, thank you, Mike, for reading all of that, um, uh, yeah, well, thank you for, for putting that together and, and, and displaying it. I think that was all good information. And I want to remind everybody that during this time, uh, during this time, a lot of these charges were printed in the banner. I mean, and all it took was an accusation and, and multiple press, press articles and press, uh, press stories attacking our town staff and, 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 uh, and attacking our elected officials, um, portraying it as something it just wasn't, and it, it, it is so frustrating to try to correct that multiple times and continue to get met with the, this convoluted, uh, responses that just deny anything in the past ever happened. I've just, I'm, I'm just stunned at some of the things that I'm, I'm, I'm seeing out there. But I'm very glad that we were able to clear this up tonight. I certainly hope this is the last of it, and I certainly hope we just cleared it up.
And also, the continued FOIA requests that you put on the staff and the elected officials. I spend multiple hours answering and trying to retrieve documents mostly from a single person that keeps asking for the same stuff over and over or something that you have already seen as a select board person. If you read your accounts payable and payroll, a lot of the reports you're requesting were in there. I gave monthly reports. I handed in monthly reports. If you didn't see them, I can't help that. They were given to a staff member to give to the select board. You guys had delinquent tax reports. You had sewer delinquents reports, treasurer reports, expenditure reports, revenue reports. I mean, a lot of paper. So I, I would appreciate, if you're gonna make a FOIA request, don't request a FOIA that you already know the answer to and have already seen, because it's just wasting taxpayers' dollars. You're wasting people's time to do stuff that you already know.
Can I speak on that?
Sure, go ahead.
Because I'm the one who handles the FOIA requests. I also want to say, and this isn't about this specifically, this is just in general about FOIAs. Um, um, I noticed this is a question I answer a lot. Um, public records requests are not requests for staff to do administrative tasks for you, and they're not requests for you to investigate records to find information for you. What they, what a, what a public records request is asking for access to public documents and public information, and that can be done. It often takes staff time. It takes thirty, more than thirty minutes. We charge a per minute fee to do the work. Um, but it's not, please give me this information and then put it on a spreadsheet in a chronological order. Like, that's not, that's not what a, a public records request is. So, you know, um, I do, I, I, I actually really enjoy the public records request. I love making public documents available to citizens. I think it's a really important job. That's why I enjoy doing it. I take a lot of pride in the way that I do it. And, um, I really hope that, I, I, but I do want, public records requests are not opportunities to find information to get people. And that's what often they have become in Powell in particular. You know, our, our, our town lawyer has made many comments about that.
Okay.
Powell loves their FOIAs.
Thank you.
Um, can I make one more comment?
Sure, go ahead, Bob.
Sure, I, I just want to make sure that, uh, I, public records are public records and, and they should be made public when they're requested. And I don't want anybody to hear any of this and think that this in any way, uh, undermines a citizen's right or any citizen's right to review public records. Um, you know, if, if you, if you want to see them, we have them. It does, we have to follow the guidelines, but I don't want anybody to feel, uh, feel like they can't request public records. That, that has nothing to do with this. This was all about, uh, getting the truth out and, and putting a stop to this really, uh, uh, I'm gonna use that word again, egregious behavior that casts our, uh, that casts suspicion onto our town staff and our elected officials. It was just awful.
You have something else to say, Ellen?
Just thank you again.
You're welcome. We appreciate all your hard work. We really do.
So if we don't, if we don't have any more discussion on this as a board, um, I'd like to make a motion that is the board's intention to allow the combining of positions, just so this is on the record, okay? And I'd like to propose we write a statement as such to add to the policy and also to send to VEMR's, the forensic auditor, and our town council so that there are no further confusions or questions on this matter.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
I'd also like to make one more motion. And I think we already have this somewhere, but I'm not sure if we have it as an actual motion and a board-approved, um, statement. statement or, or, uh, policy. And this is more for our employees rather than, um, because, because this is, this is for our employees to know this. So I want to make a motion that all of our FOIA requests that come to our town staff or, or employees, or officials, are answered by our board liaison. And I'd like to make that a motion. I, I'm not sure that our employees.
The policy, but.
It's already in the policy.
I can make sure to let everyone know.
I just want to make sure to let everybody know, all of our employees and our staff, uh, and our town officials, if there's a public records request, a FOIA request, that it's answered by our board liaison, not the staff member, uh, not even a Select Board member. It's, it goes through our, through our board liaison. That's what we're paying her for.
And you know, the, the same is true for, uh, state police requests or, or sheriff's requests. They have an, a, an individual that you have to make that request to, and they're the official response. So that's, that's very common.
I don't know if we need a motion, but I definitely want that in the minutes, and I want it, um, on the record that that's what we want as a board.
It's already in our policy.
Just want to make sure, that, that's right, but I.
I would also, well, it's on the website, but we could add it to the policy for sure. But I, I would also like to, especially right now during COVID, I would really like to set the policy that, that, that we don't have people coming in here looking at original documents unsupervised. I, I think that.
That should never happen.
Should be reproduction. Everything should be reproduction. We will, we will pull the records and we will reproduce. And we can either scan and send digitally, or we can produce paper copies, and all of that is subject to fee, and it's just a really simple process. If we do it that way, it's the same for everyone. The fees are the same for everyone. The process is the same for everyone, and that just streamlines it.
Okay. We can add that to our policy if it's not in there already.
Well, because we, that's like COVID-specific almost, right? So, you know, so I mean, I, if you wouldn't mind allowing me to, um, add that to the policy, you could take a motion on that.
Okay.
No move.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Are we all set? We can open the public comment?
I just want to ask for Leonard first.
Oh, sure. Is Leonard there?
No, I don't think Leonard's in the Zoom room.
Jim?
Oh, Jim has it. No, hold on.
Wait a second, we're not ready yet.
Uh, no, I don't think Leonard's in the Zoom room. No. All right, no, so Jim posted.
Okay, so we're going to open up the public comment. Please remember to state your name, and everybody gets three minutes, please. Thank you. Jim?
Hello, um, um, I'm not sure what to say now. But in any case, um, first of all, I want to thank Mike for, um, taking a minute and bringing to all of our attention, um, what the recap of the board is on this one issue. Um, you know, there, like he said, there is a cloud over Pownell. Um, I'm an independent person. I, um, hear what I say, or I hear what I hear and I say what I say based on my own philosophies. Um, but the one cloud that's still hanging over us that I'd like to see cleared up soon. Yes, there was a forensic audit. We have to all accept there was a forensic audit. The forensic audit was signed by the board. It moved into a process. We had the auditor come and talk. There were accusations, maybe, but there were things that were brought to the board's attention, and I feel that if a citizen has a problem, they should be able to bring it to the board. Um, what I'd like to see is this all come to an end. This town, I mean, I see a new light. I, I, I haven't met Megan, I haven't met Tim, but I see new blood coming into this town office. Um, I'd like to see that continue. Um, I'd like to see all of this come to an end so that we can become a unity as a town and all discuss everything back and forth. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to ask any questions about anymore. I'd like to see you guys somehow come to a consensus and get this ended. It's got to come to the people to understand what has happened and how we can end it. This was one step that's officially now in the minutes. And that's where, I, I, I mean, I appreciate hearing it tonight, because I heard reference in the past couple of meetings that VEMR's did make a statement, but it's not in the minutes. We don't see what that statement is. We heard the statement tonight. It's in the minutes tonight. I'd like the rest of it to come into the minutes and be finalized, and we move forward.
Okay, Jim, I appreciate that. We all agree with you, and we are working on it.
Thanks, thank you.
So Rebecca, do you want to speak to the forensic audit?
Um, sure, I'd be happy to speak to the forensic audit, as this is one of the many issues, as you know, that I am working, very much working on. Um, and I have said as much as I can, and I will say it again, um, it was delayed for months and months and months to no fault of our own, um, that which also delayed our other external audits. Um, when we finally received something, uh, and we only received something because we vaguely threatened legal action essentially, because we just, we were not receiving a report, um, that what we received was in no way a final report. Um, it was not quantifiable. It was not anything. I would love nothing more than to never say the words forensic and audit together ever again. I only want to say forensic if I'm watching like Law &amp; Order or something. I do not want to do this anymore, believe me. I would love nothing more than to be able to talk about what I know. I can say that I did show what we received from the forensic auditor to Cynthia from Nemrick, and she spoke that night based on, she actually helped us understand a lot of what was said in there. Um, and I also want to say that she spoke and the services that she offered were relative to those findings. None of those findings were of fraud, waste, abuse, or illegality. There were no misappropriation of funds. I have said that before as well. Um, but until we have the legal piece of it finalized with the forensic auditor, there is nothing public to share, but believe me, I cannot wait. I will put that, I will put that final thing everywhere that I can, because I would love for it to be over as well, believe me. And I, I, the citizens absolutely deserve full and complete context on this, and I want nothing more than to give them as much as possible.
And we want you to give it to them.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Is there any, Jim, were you done, sir? I think he was. Okay, is there anybody else?
No, no. We're all based on Rebecca. I mean, first of all, Rebecca, I give you, I give you lots of credit. If I ever owned a company or if I ever run my own town, you're the first one I want to be on my side, okay? You have, you have done what you had to do to inform what you can. But I guess my one just final question is, there's got to be a timeframe on this whole forensic, all right? Otherwise, it's just going to be a cloud over Pownell for years and years and years to come, from my understanding. And, and I, I don't want to see that. Um, I'd like to see you guys get into some kind of a discussion with Graham and Graham and just try to see if we can work this out. But, I mean, it's not going to be easy. I understand. And, I mean, I know that it's not going to become easy. And there are maybe on the contract that the Graham and Graham had maybe seventeen points. You've hit just one tonight. There are seventeen of them there. And if, at least, and if those seventeen cannot individually be addressed, this issue is not going to go away.
So Jim, um, uh, there is no more talking from the town in between us and Graham and Graham, okay? The one thing that I, the one thing, that this is now being, this is now being done by a lawyer. And, um, I do feel I can tell you is the reason why we had to stop speaking directly to them, to, to Graham and Graham, was that when we would email them inquiring after our grossly overdue final report, he would charge us to respond to us saying that it's not ready yet. He would charge, okay? So.
Okay.
So every time we spoke to him, we got a new invoice in the mail. And at that point, we realized that this is not something that, you know, your town agent, former town agent slash present board liaison can handle, okay? So I'm not a lawyer, so it got to that point. So I, the timeline, I can say, I just spoke with town council again today, and I have provided him with all of the information, and there should be a very, a final thing done, and I'm hoping that within a few weeks, we're going to have resolution to this. I'm not making a comment on that, because it also depends on Graham and Graham, okay?
That sounds great. I mean, I'm just hearing, I, I just, I'm, I'm hoping that everything that was on that whole report or anything that was, um, brought into the executive session are proven false. I mean, I want to see that, and I want to hear that. That's all. I mean, I just know that we've, I've heard sixty-five thousand dollars out there that was spent. I don't think we've spent that, because I know we did not go with the addendum. Um, I've heard that it cost between seventeen and forty-eight. I don't know what the town has spent, because I'm not going to.
Jim, I can, I can speak to that, Jim, if you don't mind me responding to that.
No, that's fine.
We spent, I, I believe we paid about sixty, and we were invoiced for about sixty-five. I don't know if we paid the extra five or not. So it actually go over.
Okay, no, that's.
Rebecca said, it, it just as Rebecca said, every time you asked a question, um, every time we pushed him for a final report, we got another invoice for asking the question. Where's our report?
I will tell you this as well, Jim. I will personally, personally make sure that it's presented clearly and cogently every seventeen points, okay?
Yeah, no, Rebecca, I have no problem. I just want to have this come to an end. And I'm, I'm sure we all do, and we can all move. Have a good night. I, I've used my time. Thank you very much.
Jim, have a good night.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else out there? Please raise your hand. I can't see that far. Is there anybody else out there?
No.
Megan, is there anybody?
Hi, this is Donna Lozon. I just wanted to say thank you guys for clearing this up. It's never good to have misinformation or rumor out there. Um, it does, you know, contribute to a lot of the difficulties in, I'm sure, in town business. Um, and it, you know, creates difficulties just living in the town, and all of the rumor and innuendo is not good for us coming together. And I just want to say thanks, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Donna. You're welcome. Have a good night. Anybody else? Mary Nani entertained the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.